2012 System Oversight Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. This afternoon we will be discussing information systems. And before I begin, please turn off your wireless communications as they tend to interfere with the taping of the meeting. Want to observe a moment of silence for Ms. Barbara Barnes, who is the mother of Robin Barnes Shell, the Coordinator of Office of Constituent Services. Thank you for that moment of silence. Ms. Waller, would you please lead us in the board prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I tell the public, what stands one name to God, indivisible, omnipotent, and justice
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Mr. Dent, call the roll, please.
Mr. Armwood.
Present.
Mrs. Beck.
Present.
Ms. Boston.
Present.
Mr. Burrows.
Ms. Hubanks.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Waller.
Present.
Ms. Ahmed.
Present.
Ms. Higgins.
Here.
Thank you. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to adopt the September 6, 2012, system oversight meeting agenda?
Second.
It's been properly moved the second that we adopt the agenda for the system oversight meeting this afternoon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Saying none, the motion passed. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve the August 23, 2012, board meeting minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Hubanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Waller, it's been properly moved the second that the board adopt the board meeting minutes for August 23, 2012. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion pass. Colleagues, we do not have registered speakers this afternoon. And before we go into the system oversight presentation, I want to take this opportunity to welcome Dr. Alvin Crowley, our interim superintendent, to the very first board meeting in his first week on the job. Welcome, Dr. Crowley.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Crowley will have much opportunity to address the public in his comments today and in our presentation with regard to systems oversight.
The topic of our system oversight meeting is information systems. Mr. Wesley Watts, Chief Information Officer, will provide a presentation on the fiscal year 2012 closeout report and the fiscal year 2012 goals for the Division of Information Technology. Mr. Watts?
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Good afternoon, Board Chair Ms. Jacobs, Vice Chair Ms. Higgins, board members, interim superintendent, Dr. Crowley, colleagues, community, and guests. Today, my colleagues and I will be sharing the results of the previous school's key performance indicators, our key performance indicators and metrics for this school year, and highlight some of our goals and projects for this coming year. At the conclusion of this presentation and question and answer session, you'll get a sense of our accomplishments, our challenges, and what we are striving for this year. Our first presenter is Centil Parameswaran, the Enterprise Systems Officer.
Good afternoon. My name is Centil Parameswaran. I manage the Enterprise Systems Office. This department basically provides services for our enterprise applications, Workly Business Suite, SchoolMax, the Data Warehouse, and Google Apps. We support the district in the area of database administration, platform management, network storage administration, and application support. Our services can broadly be grouped under three core services. The first one on this slide right now is the Enterprise Systems Planning and Architecture. We basically develop a technology architecture to support appropriate access and availability to all the users. We have employees, students, parents, contractors, vendors, all accessing our systems. So we want to be able to have an infrastructure that can support them accessing these applications from any internet-connected device. So towards that goal, we track our system capacity utilization rate as a reflection of how well we plan and do the architecture of our enterprise systems. The previous year, we had a goal of 75% system capacity utilization rate, and we slightly exceeded that goal at 79%. A reflection of the planning also is on the enterprise applications uptime. We set ourselves with a 99% goal, and we entered the year with a 99.38%. That excludes some outages that we had during the year after the recent storms. Excellent. The second core service is Enterprise Systems Administration. We provide installation, maintenance, and support of all the infrastructure components that support Oracles, SchoolMax, and the Data Warehouse, plus numerous of the tools that are required for the system. We also provide backup and recovery services, performance tuning, so on and so forth. We track, again, three metrics specifically under this category. The enterprise timely completion of service requests. We set ourselves with a 99% target, and we met that target during the FY12 close. Also, we were able to meet the goal of successful, 100% successful completion of our backup, of our enterprise databases and applications, operating systems. Also, from time to time, actually, in terms of Oracle, they have quarterly release of security and mandatory patches that we test and apply to our enterprise systems. So as well with this particular metric, we met the goal of achieving everything within the three-month period. We test them and migrate them to the systems asset pool period. And the last core service that we have is Enterprise Identity and Access Management. We have numerous systems that most of our employees need access to. So the goal is to provide our new hires access the day that they have been entered in the system. As soon as they are set up in the Human Resources System, their accounts have to be provisioned, and they are ready to go on the first day of job. So we have an Oracle Identity Management and Access Management System that has been set up. As for this particular performance, the core service, we track the number of user resources provisioned and the average time to provision accounts. Basically, we take a day or less to create access to all our employees, to all the enterprise applications that are applicable to them. As well, we handled a little over 5,000 user resources during the fiscal year. That slightly exceeded our target of 4,000, and we met the goal. Next slide, please. As for FY13, the Enterprise Systems Office has two broad goals. Number one is the infrastructure upgrade for our enterprise applications. We are currently upgrading all of our servers, storage arrays, and the backup recovery systems that handle the enterprise.
Can we ask you to speak up a little bit?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So we are currently upgrading our infrastructure for all of our major systems, including Oracle, E-Business Suite, and SchoolMax. So as part of this, the SchoolMax upgrade was completed. Along with the product upgrade, we completed the server upgrades, as well as the storage array upgrades. As we speak, we are also in the process of upgrading our, testing our Oracle E-Business Suite upgrade, which is expected to go live next month. As a part of the upgrade, again, the servers, storage arrays, backup recovery systems are also being upgraded. So that is a major initiative that we are currently working on. The second bullet on the list is the Oracle Identity Management Project. This will be an enhancement to what we currently have. Currently, all the employee account creations are automated. We want to implement a similar process for all of our students. So when the students are entered into the SchoolMax student information system, their access to the network, Google Apps, their email collaboration system, everything happens automatically. We were awarded a Race to the Top Grant, and based on that grant, we are planning to implement this enhancement in the next two quarters. And that concludes my part of the presentation, and I would like to invite Kathy Bond, Manager Printing and Copier Services.
Good afternoon.
Before you begin, I'm sorry, I apologize. I think what we're going to do is after each section, we will go ahead and do question and answer so that we can move it forward. I apologize. Ms. Johnson?
I just want to be sure, with regard to backup systems, we kind of throw that word around fairly glibly. I want to be sure that our system is secured in the sense that if we had a massive cascade failure, like we did some years ago, those areas have been fixed, and I am comfortable in my conversations with Mr. Watts, we have. But our backup system, let's say we had a major disaster, an area was taken out. Do we have in place the ability to take everything we have, or major pieces of what we have, and offload it to another provider for temporary backup services if needed?
Okay, there are two parts to the answer. The first part being, we have two operational data centers, one at Sasser and one at Bonnie John's facility. So we have the necessary infrastructure in terms of the hardware, storage systems, and the network infrastructure to support a disaster recovery. In the past, we have tested application-level recovery, for example, Oracle E-Business Suite. We have been able to test disaster recovery scenario by cloning the entire application database, the whole stack, into the other data centers. In addition, I know the technology operations have been working with the University of Maryland and other parties to have a system-wide disaster recovery off-site location setup.
Good. That is what. That's what I wanted to have publicly identified, because clearly, school goes on. Schedules have to be printed, bus schedules, students, et cetera. And I just want the public to know.
Yes, ma'am.
That disaster recovery, and they sadly can occur, but we are prepared to meet those. That is my big concern, and glad that you answered.
Understood, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is it? Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Boston.
Thanks.
Not yet. Can you explain a little bit more to us about the Oracle Identity Management Project? Exactly, you know, what would that involve as far as students are concerned? And is that information, will that information be pulled from the SchoolMax information that we have on hand?
That is correct.
And will that require, will that process be done at the school? Or do you have some type of, I guess, network or software that would actually do that automatically?
It will be an automatic process. Currently, we do this for our employees. To give you an example, once an employee is onboarded in the Human Resources System, we have a workflow process that automatically gives them access to our network, email, Oracle E-Business Self-Service, SchoolMax, Data Warehouse, and other systems like that. We wanted to be able to provide the same level of service to our students. So as soon as the student record is created in SchoolMax, we have an, we will have an automated process that will provide them the network access. Currently, we are handling it in a semi-automated way, so this is going to be streamlined. As well, when the students are rolled over to the next grade, appropriate changes will be made automatically as well. The SchoolMax, the student information system will be the source of true.
Will there be an additional cost for that process?
We already have the software in place, because we originally licensed it for the employees. So we have the products in place. And as for the professional services, we are utilizing the Race to the Top funding that we were recently awarded.
At some point, would you give us a breakdown of what that cost would be, even if it's coming out the race for the top?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. That concludes the section for you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We can go on to printing. Apologize, Mr. Armwood, I apologize. Mr. Armwood had a question.
Hello. My question is, your backup procedures, is that via tape, or is it a hot backup?
It's basically, we use the Tivoli Storage Manager. We can, we back up to the tapes over here, and we back up across the network to another tape library at the Bonnie John's data center as well.
And if a, if a system crashes, how much data do you lose? What's the timeframe for your tape backups?
We have a 30-day retention for all of our enterprise systems data, and the data is continually backed up throughout the day. So we have, every three hours, we manage to take database backups. So the worst case, we will have lost about three hours' worth of data.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Bond. I'm the manager of Print Services and Copier Program Office. The first slide is discussing the number of print jobs that the printing office itself completed. We had targeted that we would complete 1,600 jobs. We fell slightly short of that target. As you all know, we have copiers in every, every school location now that are available to teachers, and I think the usage of those copiers, which is a great thing, has actually taken some of the jobs that maybe should be routed through Print Services. I think that with a little bit of education and doing things maybe a little bit differently this year, next year our target will be met. We have a pretty dedicated, absolutely excellently dedicated staff, and our jobs are delivered on time. They have attention for detail, and we do not deliver jobs with a lot of errors. And if we do deliver jobs with errors, we know about it, so we just don't let that happen. And we try our best to get every job delivered on time. As you can see, it doesn't happen 100% of the time, but there are times, like the beginning of the school, that we're really, really busy. So we ask people from time to time, not very often, if we can rearrange those jobs. And most of the time, the different departments are very accommodating with us. We have actually made tremendous savings from duplex printing. And by doing that, what we've done is, the jobs that come through the print shop, and if they're not duplexed, we asked, is there any way possible that we can duplex these for you? It saves you so much money, not only on paper, the most cost is on paper, but also labor to run these printing presses, packaging materials. So all of that goes into factoring how much money we save over single-sided copies. The second category, the percent of duplex jobs that you can see was not met, we were a little aggressive on the amount that we factored in that could be. And I still want to be aggressive. I kind of pretty much don't ever want that to be met, because we want to constantly strive to duplex more and to save more. The reason that it wasn't met, we have to figure, a lot of the jobs that we do do are single-sided. We have business cards, envelopes, letterhead, things that will, carbonless jobs, forms, they'll never be duplexed. But we can keep trying to figure out ways to do more and more with less and less. Core service, too, is the copier program. The copiers that we have throughout the system had a few more service calls placed than I would have liked to see. But that's going to happen, especially at this time of the year. Everybody can feel, if you have paper in front of you, it feels a little moist, and that wreaks havoc on copier machines. And that requires service calls. A lot of the end-users aren't real comfortable in clearing jams, which is fine. We have people there that can help them out and train them and get them cleared. The percent of copier service within eight hours, that also was just a little bit short of our goal, but it was, it was pretty good. I'm not really, you know, stressed over that number. There's always room for improvement, and that's not a bad thing. Number of print copies. System-wide, we have a pool. That pool is 267,500,000 copies, and it seems like a really big number until you have everybody running those machines at the same time. The pool was not fully utilized this year. We have ways that we want to go about utilizing that pool fully next year. I don't want one single copy left in that pool. I want everybody in the system to have everything that they need. The schools have also been awesome with duplexing. Lot of money saved on paper, as you can see. The numbers reflect the amount of money that would have been spent. It was money saved that if you had single-sided those copies, this is the amount of money that was saved as a result of double-siding these copies. And then next year, our goals are, again, to keep on duplexing these jobs, both sides of the paper. We need to educate end-users on the value of using every inch of that piece of paper that you can. We're looking into electronic submission of print requests, because a print request at school level should be the last thing they think of. They should be able to get that job in as quickly as possible. We should be able to receive it and get it back to them. So within this next year, this will become a reality. We need to get prompt, accurate quotes back to people. They need to know what they're going to spend before they submit a job. With budgets being as tight as they are, we want them to know what they're doing before they actually commit to that job. We, again, want to realign that copy pool that we have. We want to maybe give a little bit more consideration to special needs, special areas of all types. We want to, and by doing that, we want to fully utilize that copier pool. And the last thing is, we want to ensure that the copier program and the print shop work together. There are jobs, I believe, that are being run on the copiers that should probably be routed through to the print shop. We have people that we know, that know what they're doing, how to run these jobs, how to make the most out of these jobs. We don't want teachers standing in front of copiers, printing large jobs. We have better things for teachers to do. So with that, I'm going to, if anyone has any questions?
Thank you. Yes, we do, for the Printing Services, Ms. Beck.
Thank you. On Slide 7, the duplex jobs. Do people opt into the duplex, or do they opt out?
Most of the time, this is, these are the jobs that are coming into printing services to be printed. When, a lot of times when people come in, we have, we have a couple people actually there that serve as customer service, and we look at the jobs before they walk out of the office. And if we don't look at the jobs, if they come in through the pony, we'll make a phone call. Are you sure you want this just to be single-sided, or is there, can we double-side it for you? Can we duplex it? Most of the time, they opt into duplexing, because they want to save that much money from their budget to do a different print job. So yes, they opt in.
Okay. In terms of the number of print jobs that were completed, where you said some jobs can't be duplex, I mean, can't be double-sided because they're letter header, can you just not count those? If they're only single-sided, maybe they shouldn't even be in the target number.
Well, we actually set a target number over every job that comes into the print shop. And there is always going, as you said, there's always going to be a percentage that we're never going to duplex. But by including everything, if we only included the jobs that should be duplexed, they're going to be duplexed.
Right.
They just are. So it would be 100%. Whereas, there are some forms that, some forms that we are duplexing that we never have duplexed before. And that would increase that number.
Finally, what percentage of our system printing is done in-house, and what percentage is done, I don't want to say outhouse, external?
You know what? We've been trying to.
Outsourced.
We've been, outsourced. We've been trying to determine that for a couple of years, because schools have their school operating resources that they're allowed to use. They have PT money that they're allowed to use. And a lot of times, and this is terrible, and I'll just go ahead and say it, if a copier's broken, they gather their stuff up and go to Kinko's. Now, I have been fortunate, we have wonderful principals in this system, I've got to say. And I've been able to talk to quite a few principals. I've been able to visit a few schools since school has opened. And if they are finding, they're having problems with their copiers, and they're broken, and they don't know what's, hey, give me a call. Send it in to me electronically. Scan it. Send me an email. Do whatever you have to do to tell me I need this job printed right away. All else fails, I will get in my car and drive it to you. But our goal is to have you and your teachers have everything that they need as soon as they need it for those kids to get what they need. Nothing else matters. The rest of it's logistics. That's my problem. You guys tell me what you need. The rest of it's all me.
So in terms of the outsourced printing, I'm looking at the diplomas as one of the issues of outsourced printing?
I know that years and years ago, the print shop did print the diplomas. This was, I'm so much older than you.
I doubt it.
I've been there a while, but, no, we did. We printed, I'm going to say, 12 to 15 years ago, we printed the diplomas in the print shop. Absolutely.
So we stopped because the volume, or we stopped because?
I honestly, I honestly do not know. I don't know. I know that if we can print report cards, and we can get that variable date on report cards, and we can do progress reports, and we can do letters to every home, we can do diplomas. Absolutely. We would love to do those diplomas.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'd like to introduce now our.
Before you, there are other questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm still not clear on why we would include jobs that can't be duplexed anyway in a goal for duplexing. So I mean, maybe just think about, I don't, I'm not understanding how that actually gives you an accurate picture of meeting or not meeting your goal.
Well, I think when the goals were set, honestly, that's, that's the way that the goal was set, that we took every job that came into the print shop. And I agree that that's something that really probably should be looked at, because if it's never, ever going, an envelope, there's no way. So it probably should be discounted.
Yeah, so there's not, it's not a bad thing, that if your goal is to duplex everything, and you actually reach 100%, that's great.
I mean, we've visited, we have visited schools before, and they're like, really? You're just using each side of the paper? You know, you can split that into fours on the front and fours on the back, and they do it, because that's all the space that they need. So, yeah.
And then I had, I think, I hope this comes under your question, so, I mean, under your section. So I had a complaint last year, I think I addressed it to Mr. Stansky, in terms of how the schools are allotted their printing services for their particular machines.
Oh, so you're talking about the copiers?
Yes, so they run out of time.
Okay, that is something that we've already addressed so far this year.
Okay.
No school will be turned off as a result of meeting the amount that they've been allotted. They won't be. It's also something we've asked for reports to tell us. It's also something we've asked for on reports to tell us how many children are each school, how many children have this need, that need, and so forth, so that we can realign these copy amounts. And what we will do is we will monitor them manually so that if we see, I'm not going to say, you can never say it's downright abuse, because I've seen one bazillion copies being made and called the school and said to the principal, did you know a bazillion copies were made yesterday? And she's like, yeah, it was our test coordinators getting ready for a school. So, good job. And we leave it at that. There have been other schools that we've called and said, you know, is there something that we can do for you here in the print shop? Can we reroute these big jobs some way to, I had no idea those copies were being made. Well, and I'm glad we had that. So that's why I kind of like to see rules set on the copying machines, not limits on the teacher or the person using it, whoever needs it. Kind of rules, if the job is so big, let's reroute that. Let us do that for you. We want you to spend your time planning lessons. You let us do that for you.
Okay, because I think there, I think there are obvious reasons why you need to have some regulations. I just think that each year, we should look at how that's done and make sure that, you know, people are able to do the work.
I mean, there's one thing about us as a school system, we're always learning and that's one of the lessons that we learned last year, is we do not want to shut those copiers off. We want to look at a different way to go through it. That's what we're doing.
Ms. Schubanks? Ms. Johnson?
Pretty much, you've gotten it. What I'd like to add or ask is, it's come down to the print shop, starting with, you had a number of 1,600. If you could very briefly describe, what do you mean by a job? I mean, you know, having worked in the school system, and by the way, I do remember when we printed our report cards and we got notices that said, nothing else gets sent to the print shop, we're printing diplomas this week. So I remember that. We did a great job. They look just like the ones today. However, what does a job look like? And lastly, how are you all communicating that you are here and what you do? It sounds to me like you need to do some presentations at these schools.
Yes, we have, within the last, as I said, within the last month, made visits to several schools. I've actually, and I'll just tell a secret, I've been emailing back and forth with Andrew Zuckerman. He has been awesome to me and he has asked me to give him a list of what he would like to present at the next principals' meeting, which I could not thank him enough for, because we do need to let the schools know that we're here. I agree with you. And over the last year, we can do so much more than we could do the year before. Templeton Elementary School is getting so many posters printed this year, which is wonderful because, you know, they have things they need to say to the kids. And there's no way better to talk to a child than the size, color, something or other. And they are taking full advantage. And I've had Walker Mill, talked to the principal from Walker Mill. She was having problems with her copiers. I said, well, you know what, until we can get these copiers right for you, send me your work. And then, and even beyond that, if there are large jobs, send me that. She said, I had no idea. I'm going to take you up on that offer. There is a beautiful brochure that we're printing for them right now. I was thrilled to see that. But yeah, we do need to get out to the schools more and we are getting out to the schools more because we don't like to sit around.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes, I guess I just wanted to follow up on some of Ms. Jacob's comments regarding the targets in the final. On several of those not met's, you said in reality, that was not of concern. So maybe looking at not only the one with duplex printing, but those that you feel don't accurately reflect so that they do, so that anybody who looking at this without your explanation would think, gee, we targeted 75% or only at 47%. Maybe make it more, either the target more realistic or the explanation so that you can meet that target in a way that recognizes the work that you're doing.
I agree. And on this print services, the second one, not met, we set a target of 75%. Admittedly, that was aggressive. We have dropped that target next year to 50%. Right, this year, we met 47%. I still think there's enough educating out there and enough working with our end-users that we'll get to that 50%.
Okay, but that was one of several that you indicated that there were other issues that weren't reflected in there. So I just would suggest that you review those.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. That concludes questions for the printing services.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So now, I would like to introduce our Technology Applications Director. This is Yusuf Antar.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yusuf Antar. I'm the Director of Technology Applications. I want to go through the FY12 measures that we had and then I'll go over the FY13 goals. For the core services we have is software applications, implementation, and support. That's in general, the software that we have, the patches that come from the vendors. That include the Oracle E-Business Suite, the student management systems that we maintain. For the FY12, our target was number of patches was five, we got eight, but we met the patches. Same thing, we want to reduce the amount, we'll put the patches in the system and enhancement down to about two months and we met those goals. For the following year FY13, if you see the NA, that means we're going to eliminate this and we're going to replace it with, that's based on our discussion with the Performance Management Group, with the measure that, since all our requests come through our service requests, so the number you'll see, number four on FY14, is really the number of service requests. This will come clearer later on in my presentation. So it's not four out of eight, it's four out of the total SRAs, that are over 1,200 SRAs that we receive. The average number of workdays for deployment that will be followed on FY13 will be close to 40 days, oh, 40 SRAs, sorry. The core service two, which is service requests, all our services, all the requests that come from different departments, they have to submit a service request for the data or information they need. Our goals for FY12 include the number of our SRAs. We estimated 1155, we got 1158. We've met all the SRAs that are critical. And for FY13, we're estimating 1144. The number of SRAs received, resolved was 1,100, estimated FY12, for FY, I mean FY12 and we final 1138. And this, for FY13, will be eliminated and be replaced with percent of critical SRAs resolved within 36 hours, which will be, our target was 95, the final was 98, and we continue for FY13 at 95. The rest of the measures, performance measures, percentage of the essential SRAs that resolve within 70 to 80 hours will be eliminated, percentage of non-essential SRAs, although we met all the requirement, will be also eliminated, and percent of new system enhancement SRAs built within six months will also be eliminated, but we met that. And the reason for eliminating this, because all the service requests come under SRAs. So for FY13, we're going to continue to monitor SRAs and we'll break them down by the systems we have, critical or essential, non-essential. And we continue, we added three more measures. Number of SRAs determined to be critical, that's for FY13, will be 150. Number of SRAs resolved will be 150 and number of resolved critical SRAs that are returned by the user. In other words, if somebody are not satisfied with the service, we're going to try to, you know, resolve it, but we estimate somebody would try to target less than five. Core Service Three, which is interfaces, the student management system and Oracle ERP interface with quite a few systems, transportation system, food services, to name a few. And so we have interfaces and extract data and we also have with the banks, we, so we estimate we target three interfaces per year FY12. We actually got 12 due to new system that was implemented at schools, so we also met that. For the FY13, this measure will be eliminated. Percentage of software integration, we have to meet 100% always, so that's the reason we also eliminate it. Our goal for FY13, as you know, we're currently upgrading the Oracle E-Business Suite to the latest release with several enhancements. The student information system, we're also expect to have one more enhancement this year. We've already implemented some major enhancement back in April. We are intending to implement the electronic transcripts that the student can take, automatically transfer to transcript universities. We also going to, today, we have an asset management system that serves the Technology Distribution Center. We try to expand this to other departments to maintain other assets other than IT. This year for HR, we're also implementing the Oracle Learning Management that will take care of monitoring the teacher performance and also professional development. This system will replace the ERO system that we have today. I sourcing, this is for purchasing, all our RFPs will be online, there is no longer paper. So we'll have a process in place, the manager will create a requirement and forward it through a process electronically to personnel department. We're also enhancing our help desk system. We're eliminating the current system, replacing with brand-new system that enable the users to create the help desk straight without having to call the help desk. Hyperion implementation, and this is for the finance, the budget section and finance, this is to enhance and support the student-based budgeting. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
I have two questions. I'd like to know how our, is our IT division doing in terms of writing our own patches when we find that one is needed? I know that two years ago especially, we actually were really, we were doing that. I mean, it was something we needed and in talking with Mr. Watts about how to fix the problem, essentially, we were rebuilding inside of that Oracle system through our own IT skilled personnel. And I'd like to know if we are continuing to build that capability? And my last question is, how do you know what the target goal is going to be about service request? How do you set that number?
Well, over the last, well, I'll answer the first one first, first question. I guess you meant patching. The patching of the system that comes straight through the vendor, we have no control over those. In other words, they'll send us an update to the system and that we have to test and implement. Perhaps the one you're referring to is the configuration or customization of certain gaps in the system that we normally apply, that comes through an SRA. So this is similar to when you get a Microsoft update and those come from the vendor and if you want to.
No, I got that part. No, I'm understanding. What I'm trying to determine is the technical expertise inside of PGCPS.
Yeah, we do have.
That when, yeah, because I saw it being developed and I just want to make sure that within PGCPS, we are not solely dependent on Microsoft or somebody else, that we can and have staff that can see, diagnose what the problem is and go, no, that's not going to serve us well. Here is what we can do around that in terms of making it better for us and our unique needs.
We actually do quite a bit of that. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we can configure. We try to avoid customization and also during the process.
Why do you do that?
Because sometimes the, if you do customization, a lot of time identify also inefficiency in the process. So a lot of time to go around it. If the customization is essentially needed and it have an effective overall effectiveness in the entire district, yes, we'll do the customization. A system that we use also allow you to configure the system in a different process that allow you to meet your requirement without customization. And a lot of department miss, they miss, they don't really understand the difference between configuration and customization. And we do have both. But in the process, we also improve the process of each department because we're trying to work as a process versus task. And that's been throughout the every department. And we do have all our customization internal if we need to, we have the skills and we have a great team in the technology.
That is obviously my most critical question, the skill set. And I'm not saying we don't, that's why, I just want to make certain we are maintaining that skill set, that our staff who have, who are skilled, who are talented, that they can meet the challenge whenever it arises. That is a critical piece for me. But I submit to you that every school system is unique. Prince George's is unique. And while you can have a base of operation for your IT products, et cetera, the reality is that every school system functions and what is the outcome, the output that you want is different. And I just want to make sure that where needed a Prince George's County Public School product, in-product, we can take care of making sure that we have it and that we can get it, whether it comes through customization or whether it comes through interfacing with the product manufacturer or not. I like Homegrown to the degree practicable.
Well, actually, all our customization or configuration of system, you feel every single day. I mean, look at the self-service that you've been, all the self-service activity that you see online are, you know, in-house. And we implement as we, as our department requests those services. But all the stuff we implement is really in the in-house and we have the skills.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Now I'll introduce Director of Technology Operations, Mr. Mark Turner.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Turner, the Director of Technology Operations for the school system. I oversee our two data centers, our network, our internet access, the microfilm office, all the servers in the schools and the telephone systems. So pretty much with everything with a wire on it except for TV. So this is Technology Operations Metrics for this year and you'll see that I have six outages, reporting major outages. These outages occurred mostly in this building, unfortunately, related to visitors coming into the building, putting loops in our network. We're working with our network manufacturers to reduce the impacts of loops by implementing smart switches that identify these loops and shut them down. If you want more details about what loops are, I'll tell you offline. Definitely, it's an interesting challenge for IT throughout the school system and we do have some solutions that are being implemented now. Our LAN WAN uptime, we met that target. Our ISP uptime was 100% and our enterprise server uptime, we met that target. Next slide, please. Number of telecommunication support services requests, this is just a number telling you the volume that came in and the percentage of voice and data builds complete on schedule, we met the target. And the percent of telecommunication support service requests closed, within this range, we also met this target. Next slide, please. Number of wiring transfers to the bank, we met the target. Everybody got paid or vendors got paid, everybody's happy about that. And percent successful daily wire transfers, 100%. So you see the number and the percent there. Number of transcript requests, this is a number saying the volume coming into the microfilm office, which I oversee. And the percent of transcript requests processed in seven days, we did not meet this target because of a staff reduction related last year and I only had one staffer at the beginning of the year. So, I anticipate this year will be okay, long as my staff don't get sick and are out. And we're trying to layer that. I have cross-trained some additional staff. Percent of aging microfilm documentation duplication, this did not get met, but I do have a good story around this. This past year, I've been talking to various vendors that will duplicate our microfilm 'cause it is aging. And then I came across the Maryland State Archives and I learned about their services. Their business had dropped off significantly due to the fact that the real estate industry had dropped down and they were doing a lot of processing of land titles and imaging a lot of documentations around purchasing of properties. And they said they would be interested in providing the service of duplicating our microfilm, also putting it on electronic form and providing us the electronic form and also storing the duplicated microfilm at the Maryland Archives forever. So, that was a great win for us. We worked with the purchasing department here and Maryland State Archives management and we put together a statement of work. And this was in late April. That's why we didn't get the whole year to get this going, but we are now processing and copying the microfilm film at the Maryland State Archives, which is a great solution for off-site storage of our microfilm that goes back to the beginning of the school system to, I believe it is nineteen ninety. So, we're pretty excited about this collaboration and will be the first school system to have off-site storage of our microfilm, of student data, student records, graduate records. Next slide, please. Number of IT compatibility tests, requests performed, there were twenty-four and there were thirty-nine that came in. This was not met, the reason being is staff cuts. And so, we hit a target of, we didn't hit our target, was sixty-one point five actual. Previous years, we've hit it no problem, but we had lost three staff members and that definitely impact us being able to support testing new software that would come into the school system and make sure it was safe to put on our network, compatible with our network, didn't cause problems. Next slide. And Technology Operations FY thirteen goals are to overview, we're gonna, over sixty wireless infrastructure projects in FY thirteen, bringing the total wireless sites to approximately one hundred. I'm also responsible for implementing wireless in the schools. It's a network product. And plans are to make, address the remaining sites, budget permitting. And we also are going to put together a business continuity plan this year, working with all the teams of IT. And new infrastructure for SchoolMax and Oracle E-Business Suite with Sental's group. I support him in his efforts transitioning from the older equipment that we have, server equipment, to the new server equipment that is in our data centers today as we transition to R-12. And are there any questions?
There are, thank you very much. I have Ms. Higgins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question has more to do with the fact that we use Google email account. And I've read in the paper that we lose confidentiality as a result of that, and I may not be phrasing the problem correctly. So, if you could-
Yeah.
...phrase the problem correctly and then also respond, I appreciate it.
I would, Sental actually takes care of the email. And I could let him stand up and answer that question.
The email, all the documents are stored in the infrastructure, but the data itself, according to the agreement, is ours. So, we own the data regardless of where the data is stored.
So, they have access to our emails, whoever they is?
The, it's basically the entire, all the emails, documents are hosted on their servers in their data centers, subject to their security guidelines.
Okay. And if I'm understanding correctly, they have made no guarantees about whether they'll ever sell the information that is captured on that? Am I correct about that?
Basically, they have provided information in writing to us stating that we own the data and they will never use the data for their business purposes.
Okay, so I'm incorrect about them saying that they will use our data?
They will not use our data.
They will not use the data?
Yes.
Okay. And then we use the Google Gmail because I assume it's convenient and also inexpensive?
It is, yeah. It was implemented as a cost-saving measure, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Johnson?
With the millions of records we have going back to whatever-
Right.
-in Prince George's, where are we in terms of year of everything beyond is done? And where are we? When do we believe we are going to finally digitalize all and then, of course, going forward, we're good?
We're anticipating we'll be done, the microfilm duplication and digitization this year.
Excuse me?
This year, for the microfilm.
I under, okay. What I'd like to know is, all microfilm, we are going to be done very soon-
This year, yes.
-with all of our old back records-
That's correct.
-this year.
This year.
Excellent. That's, that's what I needed to know.
I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, that'll be nice. And sixty wireless sites or sixty schools, you know, sixty locations. Could you do just a very brief explanation about Dwight Eisenhower? While it isn't going to be a full wireless site at this moment, we're going to be setting in wireless or having wireless through iPad carts. I don't know if Mr. Watts wants to speak to that, but I would just like to be able to have that information because we do have many people whose children go to Dwight Eisenhower who are watching us this afternoon.
Ms. Johnson, at Dwight D. Eisenhower, we have approximately ten iPad carts coming to the school. Each one of the carts will have a wireless access point. So, anywhere those carts are in the building, it will allow them to have wireless. At this time, Dwight D. Eisenhower is not part of the group of sixty right now. The sixty are based on FARM's data that we, most of this is done through grants that we received and through the QZAB project through MSD. And again, that, those sites are based upon FARM's information and selecting those in turnaround schools.
No, I got that.
Okay. I'm sorry? There are ten carts of thirty iPads each, there's three hundred?
Ten carts?
Of thirty-
Thirty carts.
Ten carts of thirty iPads of these.
Got it. Okay, so, ten carts, if they are strategically placed in the building, you could almost have the entire building covered, correct?
Well-
Depending upon where you put them.
I'll say this, that the thirty iPads in each cart should do fine with the access point that's placed upon it.
Okay, but reaching outside of that cart would be somewhat problematic.
They tend to have, what, about a hundred and fifty-foot range or so each, each access point?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Waller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not quite sure where this falls, but I'm-
Sure, go ahead.
It's a housekeeping question. As we go through our email addresses, we have an abundance of employees that are no longer with the school system. When and how, or is it possible to have it cleaned up?
I'll ask Sental to address that question.
Could you please repeat the question, ma'am?
Yes, it's a housekeeping question in regards to the email addresses. A lot of times when we go to send emails to persons, you know, you type in a couple of letters and it goes to it. You, one person could have four or five different email addresses. And also, in the email list served, there are a number of persons that are no longer with the school system. Where are we in cleaning the, these names up, or cleaning that system up? Will it be done or do you just keep it in there? And also, does it take up space on the server? You all in IT, I'm not, but I'm just thinking that somewhere out here, there should be a magic number or something, so that's what I wanna know.
As the employees leave the system, their email accounts are automatically terminated as well. So, they do not continue to take up any more space on the email infrastructure. Regardless, it's maintained by Google, so we don't, we don't expend anything in terms of resources maintaining those storage as well.
Okay. Let me give you an example. Office of Constituent Services probably has four or five different address names in there. OCR, CONST, at PGCPS, any other number that's not coming to mind right now. So, my question is, there are five in there, but only one works. How do we get the other four out? Or do you just keep on getting them in there? And we don't know if the emails are getting through those persons. For instance, this week, I just recently sent it, the superintendent, an email, I thought it was his email address, and it wasn't, 'cause I clicked on it, it wasn't his email address.
Okay. We will reach out to your office and get that taken care of, ma'am. We will get that information and clean that up.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ahmed?
Thank you. I was just wondering how long the contract for SchoolMax lasts or when it expires?
The contract renewed on yearly basis. Yeah, the contract renewed on yearly basis. So, there's no expired date until you wanna change it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Burrows?
Just trying to make sure this question's right for this part of the presentation. First, I want to thank you in your office for the work that you guys do. I know IT office, you guys are working hard. I remember the SchoolMax craze and so you guys have toughed it out through thick and thin. So, thank you for your work and for all of you. My question has to go to the technology refresh.
That's a question for Mr. Watts.
Okay.
Okay.
So, during the first day of school-
Mr. Burrows? We'll be presenting that next, if that's okay.
Fine.
You'll be first up, Mr. Burrows. I promise.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Hello, I have, I guess, three questions. My first one is access to social networks. I notice we still block Facebook and Twitter and so forth, and since school staff superintendent and so forth uses Facebook, are we going to allow access to social sites throughout network soon?
That is a question you have to ask the superintendent.
Say that again, please.
That is a question you need to ask the superintendent.
Yes? Oh, to ask the board?
Yeah, ask the superintendent.
Got it. My next question, the inter-county broadband network-
Yes.
-I know our schools are going onto the inter-county broadband network. Have there been any discussions about using transceivers to provide access to neighborhoods around the schools?
Not yet. It's still at least a year out or two before it actually gets fully implemented. Our high schools and middle schools today have what we call dark fiber, which have one gig to them. We have not implemented that concept there. I don't know if we will with the ICBN fiber either. So, how far it would reach out, that's a good question, the cost around it. It's something that we have in the back of our mind, but how many individual homes are you gonna really reach as that, you know, we don't have cell towers, we're not allowed to put towers on school property now because of something that happened at the state. So, we can't really get up high. So, if you can't get up high, you can't get a signal that goes very far. So, those are, you know, the advantage of Verizon and AT&amp;T and that is they have towers that are very tall and that can penetrate these neighborhoods and get good signal. We would be laying pretty low on the plane, so.
Okay. My next question, the mention of Google and privacy, Mr. Watts was good enough to explain to me about how to prevent Google from linking my private and my school system IDs and content. However, I'm willing to bet that most of our employees are not aware of how to do that because everyone should know Google automatically tries to link all of your activities that they can get a hold of, whether it's your business or private. It makes it very difficult to keep those things separate. Are you doing any education or training to employees on how to separate their private versus their professional?
Yeah, I've been told it's on a case-by-case basis, so I don't address, I don't necessarily support the, that application, the email directly. I support the network, the infrastructure around it. But it's a case-by-case basis.
I guess if we're doing that on a case-by-case basis, what's to prevent someone from getting in trouble? From having email linkages or contact information linked and pulled up that's also relevant to their business? If we don't be more proactive?
Yeah, this is, I haven't heard of this before, honestly. So, I, I don't, I don't have a response, but we can get back to you, see what, look into this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Waller?
Yes. What is the status of the data warehouse rollout?
Data warehouse?
The data warehouse product was implemented in three different phases. The phases one and two that cover the principal dashboards and the student dashboards have already been placed in production, meaning it's available for the users. The third phase involves accessing information from our financial and human resources system. And I believe that is being wrapped up as we speak. And the last I heard, it was going to be available in the month of September. So, they were going to complete all the testing certifications, everything for that particular module. So, in September, all the functionality intended for the data warehouse will be available. Thank you.
That concludes questions for your section. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, I'll introduce Wesley Watts, the CIO.
I'm gonna quickly review Technology Support Services. Technology Support Services staff primarily function, they primarily function as they manage the life cycle of computing devices, meaning they go through from procurement to provisioning, barcoding and inventory, setup, technical support, repair and disposal of equipment. These are the individuals like the IT techs in schools and offices. They manage the technology distribution centers and they mentor support for the IT high school programs. Our first objective is to reduce basically the cost of ownership for computing. And last year, we began that process by taking a lot of these things in-house, so setting up computers, imaging them, barcoding them, place them in the inventory and actually doing the repair in-house. We saved approximately one point three eight million dollars during that process last year. We were not sure how many computing devices we were going to provision. We knew how many we were gonna do in the refresh, but there's also schools and offices that buy lots of equipment during the, during the process of the school year. And you can see that our estimate, our target was seven thousand devices and we actually ended up with sixteen thousand nine hundred during the course of the last year. We do anticipate another ten thousand devices being provisioned this year. The next slide. The next slide, we're going to change the metric that we just spoke about, the cost savings, 'cause our main- savings, because our main focus is to make sure that we have computing devices in all of our teachers' hands, okay? And basically, what we're doing is, we currently have, we're on our third year of the technology refresh. Two years ago, we provisioned the middle schools, last year, we provisioned the high schools, and this year, we're working on the elementary. We, last year, we had completed about 4,250 devices through the teachers, of, 4,250 teachers had the devices, and this year, we intend on completing that for the elementary school teachers, okay? We anticipate that every, every teacher that's in front of students will have a computing device that's less than four years old. That's our goal. The second objective is to ensure that all technology equipment is barcoded and properly placed in inventory. Inventory has been a problem, if you will, throughout the district for a number of years. Last year, we began taking this on for technology of equipment. And what happens in today is, all equipment is shipped in the central location, in a technology distribution center. We currently have two, one at Fairmont Heights and one at Gwynne Park High School. When equipment arrives, it's barcoded and placed in inventory before it's provisioned, set up, and sent to the user. Our next objective is to increase the number of computing devices that are repaired and replaced within eight work hours. Our goal here is that either staff, either IT staff at the school, or one of the staff members at the TDC will provide a computing device for that individual. If an individual's laptop breaks, an IT tech may place a computing device, a computer, a laptop, or a desktop in the room so that they at least have a computing device for instruction. If they come to the TDC, we'll probably give them a loaner laptop if, if the IT tech is not already taking care of it at the school. The next objective is being changed somewhat this year from last year, because last year was our baseline. Last year, we anticipated, we were hoping to receive 90 students in the IT high program. We actually only had 68. Of those 68, Santil, if you could go to the next slide for a second, I just want to explain this a little better. Of the 68 students, I'd like to talk about that, we anticipated that all students would go through a certification process, okay? As we went through the year, we realized that, as we were going through the year, that there were certain students, we have to pay for these certification tests. And as we're going through the year, we realized that there were certain students that were not on track for certification, so we opted not to pay for those certification tests, okay? They were not doing well in the class, if you will, and we opted not. Of the 68, 35 of them, about 51% of the students, did sit for exams, okay? Of those fif, of those 35, 25 of them passed the first certification exam, which is about 71% pass rate of the 35 students. And of those 25, 13 went on to pass the second exam, which they received their A-plus certification, which is another 52%. So basically, 52% of our students that sat for the exam received their A-plus certification, which is good. This year, just in talking with the IT teachers at the two sites, we have 241 students now in the program. Of those students, there's 168 that are in computer repair, there are 51 in the engineering track, and there are 21 in the programming track today. The engineering and programming is the sophomore year, okay? And that, they'll stay in that track, if you will, for three more, for three years, sophomore, junior, and senior year, okay? Next slide. So our goal this year is to complete the elementary refresh. We have a lot of elementary schools, and we are about, about 50 to 60% complete, and we still have a number of schools, about 60 or 70 sites, that we have teachers with old equipment. And when I say old, seven to eight years old is their laptops' age. We also expanded into the IT high program, we're working on the Gwynne Park program, we have 79 students that have enrolled, and we are working on next year's curriculum with Adobe Corporation. The, the third one, we are working on building our third and last distribution center up in the north end of the county, in Duval High School, and preparing for an IT high program there as well. Mentioned earlier, last week, we approved the board approval for the consent agenda with the digital learning pilot at four high schools and one middle school, Whitey Eisenhower, as we were speaking with earlier. We are receiving that equipment here this, into this week, and we hope to provision all of that next week and start making our plans to move that into the schools real soon. And the last piece there, our asset management system is very sophisticated, it's integrated into our HR system, it's integrated into our student information system, as well as our procurement module. We also intend to integrate some customer service tools, such as allowing surveys and things like that. So when you come in and you receive a machine, you automatically get an email that says that you received it. This is your barcode, this is your serial number. By the way, how is your service? Go to this link and tell us how we're doing. So we're trying to integrate things that keep us a little abreast of how we're doing when we hand out equipment and when we repair equipment. So we're working on those today, and we hope to have them implemented here this fall. And that's it. So, I would like to introduce our next, oh, I guess I have to wait for questions, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you very much, and again, we applaud you for the work in, in including our students in this wonderful opportunity. Ms. Boston?
How you doing, Mr. Watts?
I'm fine, ma'am, how are you?
One of the questions that I had, when I was at a back-to-school night at Gwynne Park, and the question arose about insurance, how is the insurance process done for the loners of the, the MacBooks that the IT students will be bringing home?
Okay, that's a very good question. So, I'm going to explain the insurance at Fairmont, and I believe it was mimicked, and I, I need to check on that, but I believe that it's very similar to what is going on at Gwynne Park. Last year, Fairmont, as they met with parents, they talked to them about safety and security of the devices. One of the things that they asked the parents to do is to provide a combination lock. The school would buy one for $10, and it would go on their locker to make the, sure that the device was secure while it was in the building in the, in the student's locker. There was a $50 fee for this, for the students to use the, the devices. And what they did is, I'll give you an example, let's say that there was 100 students that, that had the device, that, that took the device home, and they paid the $60, the $50 fee, if you will. That gave the school $5,000. And that, that took care of, if you will, any damage that was taken care, taken on those devices. So if a student had accidentally dropped it, that, those funds were used to do that. We did not use that fund, we didn't, we used some dollars out of that fund, but we did not expend that entire fund at Fairmont last year. It worked well for them. We had one device that was stolen. We do have tracking systems on all of our laptops, okay? So, and we have an insurance policy on top of that as well, for theft, okay? It's not, it's not when you drop a machine on the ground, but we do have them for theft, and we cover that device for those purposes. So, if it's very, if it's similar to Fairmont, the parents and the student would come in and they would provide $60, they'd have a combination lock, and they would have the $50 service fee, and they would have that used all throughout the year, okay? And that's basically what they did at Fairmont. So, and we work with the school to help them or assist them with that, but we didn't want to tell the school how to do it, okay? We want to leave that opportunity for schools to be creative on how they hand out laptops or, or computing devices.
Well, one of the things that the instructor did, tell the parents, that the MacBook was to be kept at home, that was for the at-home use, that there were different equipment that they used at school, so the, so to minimize the being stolen at the school.
Right.
Was, was for it to be kept at home.
And, and that was a decision made at Gwynne Park. At Fairmont, they do carry them back and forth, okay? There is a, there is a set of devices in the classroom that they do utilize. We had a few incidents last year with students losing their laptop, or the laptop getting stolen, and I think that this is a way for them to try to prevent that from occurring, walking home from school, or getting off the bus, that kind of thing, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burrows, my apologies, you, thank you.
No problem. On the first day of school, I went to a number of the schools in my district, and I noticed in some schools, they had smart boards and computers, and then in other schools, heck, absolutely nothing. And, and one of the schools that I went to, they were designated Title I, and so they had smart boards, but they lost their designation, and then every piece of equipment was removed out of that school and placed into another school. I just wanted some clarification on that, and what are we doing? Because we, we still have schools without sufficient computer labs, we still have schools without up-to-date technology. And we have schools that had it, but then, you know, they lost their, you know, population, and now they don't have it now.
So, Mr. Burrows, I'm going to address your, the Title I situation. When equipment is purchased with Title I grant funds, it follows the Title I, the Title I schools, okay? So, if a, for example, the inter-write boards that you were speaking of, the interactive whiteboards, those, that, those pieces of equipment actually need to be used by schools that are designated Title I, okay? So, so that's why boards were probably taken out of that building if that building is no longer Title I, okay? I'm not familiar with the case that you're speaking of. Regarding the technology refresh, there are a couple things that happen. The first thing that we do when we go through a refresh is we actually replace the teacher's machine, the computing device. The second thing we do is we sit down and we work with the principals. Phase two for elementary schools is next year, that's the plan, okay? And basically, what that is, is we take the enrollment of each school, we multiply it by $150, okay? And that pot of money with the instructional leaders of the school is their instructional computing money, their funds. So the schools decide what they buy, okay? With instructional technology funds, all right? And what you're seeing right now is, if you go to a high school or a middle school, you'll probably see a little bit newer, okay, equipment that are in those buildings, because they received their funds, high schools last year, middle schools a year before. Because we have so many elementary schools and a lot of staff that work there, we could not do phase one, if you will, the teachers, and phase two, the instructional technology in one year. We would have needed over $20 million, okay? That's slightly less than $20 million, excuse me. And so next year, there'll be a request that comes before the board for phase two for the elementary refresh, okay? And again, the schools, they get basically autonomy, if you will, on how they're going to use those funds, what they think is best for their classrooms, okay?
And so, that presentation or that proposal will come to the board around what time next year?
So it'll come through the budget process, it'll be the technology refresh funding for next year.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Armwood?
Thank you. My question goes to, you, you mentioned that there's a $50 fee for the technology, for the insurance that parents pay, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And $10 lock fee. How do you handle farms or parents who say they can't, can't afford it?
So I, I want to be clear, Mr. Armwood, this is handled at the school level, okay? So I don't, Central Office IT does not get involved with the actual handing out of the devices, and some schools may choose to do it differently, they may pay for the $50 fee for the child. I can't speak, I, I can get you more information on how Fairmont handle it, and how Gwynne Park intend to handle it, but we don't have a lot of cases where equipment is going home today. We do see that being, you know, obviously growing as we, as we go along, but right now, there's just a few sites that are doing that, okay? And I'll get that information, pass it along.
I think that's the end of our questions, colleagues. Oh, Ms. Johnson?
Thanks. Mr. Watts, I'd like to follow up with Mr. Burrows' question about, obviously, the unequal slash inequitable resourcing in different schools. How, do you have the information about how a school can legally work with outside entities that could augment the technology budget to begin to close that gap between those schools that have and those schools that don't have? Because I, I think in looking around and talking with community members in, in places, and I will say outside of District One, that's what they really want to know.
Sure.
What can we do? They recognize the school system is not supplying, but they want their children to have the same.
Of course.
Or, or close to the same. So if you could assist this board through our legal department or whatever with some ideas, how can legally we bring and close that divide? I understand about Title I, smart boards, you lose your status, they go, because they were bought by that. But I also know that there is an elementary school that the teachers decided they wanted them, and they had enough money in their PTA, and they bought them.
Yes, ma'am.
But that is impossible everywhere, so could you help us in the next week or so, outline information that can be flowed into, like some of the schools Mr. Burrows was talking about and other schools? How can we build that type of financial collaborative? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Boston?
I have one more question, Mr. Watts, and you might be able to answer this, or it might be our legislative person, I'm not sure. But it, it has something to do with the towers in our school system, is this a question for you, or is that more of a legislative?
I'm going to be honest, I, I feel a little bit more comfortable with legislative answer that question.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Save it till then.
All right. Our next presenter is Lisa Spencer, she's the Director of Technology Training in our last group of slides.
Good afternoon. I'm Lisa Spencer, and I'm representing Technology Training and Support. My department actually represents training on the administrative information side, as well as training on the instructional technology side and the help desk. So, with that said, for our goal number one, we have, working on the administrative information side, we are training the, training on School Max, we also are training on Oracle. So our goal was to increase, increase the percent of end-users passing training assessments from 90% to 92%. And the training assessments actually are required for all of our, for majority of our Oracle courses. So you take an Oracle class, in order to get your Oracle rights, you have to pass that assessment. So, and we've actually met that goal, we've met all of these goals here. The number of training resources available, we've met, there weren't any issues, and we are going to stick with these same goals next year. The only one we're going to modify would be the Moodle Learning Management System. Yusuf had mentioned earlier that we are upgrading Oracle, and parts of that will allow us to implement the Oracle Learning Management System, so we'll be utilizing that, and it may change some of the things that we house in Moodle that will then be housed in Oracle Learning Management. Our second goal is on our instructional technology side, increase the percent of end-users completing sharing technology with educators program, and actually, that, that's what we had for last year, and that's changes for next year, but we actually met that, that particular goal. Our training resources that we've used has increased to 120, 195. Our self-paced online courses, we've up to 10. Numbered teachers receive instructional technology training, I'm really pleased to see that that number has increased greatly. One of the reasons that's increased is the structure in terms of assigning a particular trainer to a smaller set of schools. We had about six trainers assigned to roughly anywhere from 30 to 40 schools, where we had the other instructional specialists working on different projects and training for the district, but we've actually farmed out everyone, assigned them to different schools, and they are assigned to, to provide onsite training, as well as training delivery for the district-wide staff. So we've able to up our numbers and be able to reach those teachers who are not, who have not been coming to our training sessions on their own. have not been coming to our training sessions on their own. We are able to touch them now. But certain, percent of trainers who identify themselves as likely to use learned skills on a daily basis, we've met that goal. That's, we acquired that information through our surveys. Our new goal would be the number of virtual trainings hosted by T3, or actually hosted by the people who are trained by T3. We will be utilizing WebEx. We also have Blackboard Collaborate. And with Oracle Learning Management System, we'll have another tool that will provide us the opportunity to be able to deliver some virtual webinar trainings. So we'll actually be able to use that without having to pay additional fees, which is what we're paying for WebEx and Blackboard Collaborate at this point in time. Step, we've actually met our goals. That's okay, you, I said, so we've met all of those goals, so you're good. Thanks. The help desk. We've, as you can see, have not met most of those goals. A lot of the, a lot of situations occur because there are so many people out in the field. Our tickets are received, or phone calls are received by seven staff members in, within the help desk. Tickets are either closed at the help desk level, or they are reassigned to other departments. Because of our, our techs are out in the field, other departments, because of the time span in terms of when they're able to get to the tickets, when tickets are resolved, we were looking at closing Priority One tickets within a 24-hour time, turnaround time. We have not met that. A lot of instances occur in terms of tickets have been resolved, but they didn't go back and close the tickets. Same issue would be, occur for the Priority Two tickets. So that gives us an overall picture of what's happening in terms of out in the field and as a whole, as far as IT is concerned. But my focus for next year would be changing these goals so that I have a better look in terms of what's actually happening at the help desk level. So the goals for next year for the help desk, I'll be focusing more so on what are the help desk technicians actually doing? How many, how many calls are they actually receiving? How many calls are actually being answered? What's the average of the answer time? And with all of those pieces combined, it will give us an overall percentage or grade for the help desk performance overall. We'll still be looking at the closure rate for a Priority One, Priority Two tickets, but I will specifically be focusing on the help desk performance for next year. Some of the goals for next year would be providing continued support from T3 trainers out in the field, supporting the clusters. Also, working towards increasing the number of teachers trained. When we were training or holding after-school activities or workshops, whether we were paying or not, we were getting the same faces, the same teachers who are registering for the classes. This time, we actually get a chance, or this structure allows us to touch a lot of different teachers. It also provides us the opportunity to be able to go into the schools, work with the teachers during the day on their planning time, and actually provide some modeling, as well as co-teaching opportunities and mentoring with the teachers. We're also looking to increase our online resources. And a couple of other goals that didn't make, that aren't up there would be definitely to focus on supporting the new iPad schools that are coming on board. So we'll be working directly with them, providing support, as well as working to carry out or continue what was established at the eighth grade level from the middle school to ensure that it is also being carried out in the high schools. And we will be implementing a new help desk system. Yusuf's group has been in development with that. We will be probably being that by the end of this month. And that system will be working towards being able to help better manage the tickets and monitor what's being done and how often, or what's not being resolved or taken a look at, so that we can ensure that proper attention is being given to all the issues that have been entered into the system. And that concludes my presentation. Questions?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any final questions before we?
See, Dr. Crowley, yield to Dr. Crowley.
Thank you. Just like to take this opportunity to say that this work supports our commitment to efficient operations, which is one of our key priority areas. I just want to make that link between the presentation and our five key priority areas. And as such, we'll continue to look at our performance measures and our indicators and make adjustments as necessary, whether it impacts our overall operations or specifically our business practices. And then finally, I'd like to thank Mr. Watts and his team for the work that they do every day. I had an opportunity to spend some time in his shop earlier this week, and it's just fascinating going from the different sections and seeing the work that supports the system. And the print shop is just amazing. It's just, just to look at the volume of work that takes place there every day. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Watts, and your team for, for your work as well. Ms. Beck, did you have a question?
I did have one follow-up question. What is your staffing like? I know that there was a comment, there's seven on the help desk, but are there vacancies? Should there be more on the help desk?
Good question. We, we have 184 staff in total. We have approximately one, none, how many? Three? We have seven vacancies right now.
Seven vacancies that you're able to hire for?
Oh, we're in the process of hiring. That's correct.
The word vacancy means several different things.
So there is no hold on these vacancies. That's correct, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, the board will move on to consent agenda.
Our first area in terms of consent agenda, we'd like to recommend approval of consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.4.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Colleagues, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Thank you, Ms. Waller. Board recommend, superintendent recommends approval of consent agenda items, all in favor. Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, the motion passed. Next.
Staff would like to recommend approval of consent agenda items 6.1 and 6.3 through 6.66. 6.2 is recommended for removal. We'd like to do additional analysis and then report back to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. If I understand correctly, you're recommending approval of 6.1 and then 6.3 through 6.6.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion? So moved. Thank you, Ms. Waller. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. Ms. Dent, call the roll, please.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood.
Aye.
Mrs. Beck.
Aye.
Ms. Boston.
Aye.
Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks.
Aye.
Ms. Waller.
Aye.
Ms. Higgins.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Crowley, I believe that brings us to the next several items which have no action. I think the next item for action is 9.0. Thank you, Dr.
Getting used to the light system here.
Thank you. Colleagues, is there a motion to treat this item as a first reader?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Thank you, Ms. Beck. We're probably moved in second that we treat this item, FY 2013 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan as a first reader. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, the motion pass. Okay, we didn't have any follow-up items from our last session, and therefore, I need a motion to reconvene in executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Thank you, Ms. Boston. We will reconvene in executive session to complete items that we did not finish early on. All in favor?
Aye.
Objections? Seeing none, we are not quite adjourned. Can we please go back on the record? So we want to ensure that we make a public announcement that Dr. Height has requested to be relieved from his contract early. And early, his request is for September the 7th, which is this Friday. If you recall, the board had agreed to do so effective the end of this month, September. So we have, the board has taken the requests from Dr. Height. We have discussed with Executive Cabinet and Dr. Crowley regarding transition and how the district is moving forward. And in that vein, the board was comfortable with granting Dr. Height's request to have his last day be effective September the 7th, and we wish him well as he moves on to Philadelphia. We do know that he still maintains currently a residence here and may, in fact, come back for one of our CIP meetings to ensure that he says his final goodbyes, if you will. And so we wanted to make sure we made a public announcement regarding that. We want to thank, okay, oh, I'm talking. Want to thank him for his service here and, and make the public aware. Okay, wonderful. That being the case, we will now adjourn and reconvene in executive session, and accordingly, a press release will be announced according to that. Thank you.